On 6:14. And we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and pure and just and strong. Thank you. All right, consideration of agenda. Planning Commission have any questions, concerns, comments?
I just remind all the Planning Commissioners to turn your microphones on and speak into them. The recording secretary will read it.
Yes. You good for the agenda? Yeah. Go over the agenda.
Oh, yes. Sorry about that.
Yes, I'm good with the agenda.
Okay, great. Somebody want to make a motion to accept it as is?
I will make a motion to accept the agenda as is.
I'll second it.
Awesome. Does anyone have a conflict of interest?
Oh, you need to take a vote on that.
Oh, a vote. Oh, yes. Okay, a vote. All say aye.
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 Nay? Nope.
You're welcome. I know that you're usually the secretary, so you don't even get to do the vice chair stuff at times.
Right.
Your way.
Yeah.
We'll help you out.
Okay, conflict of interest. Anybody have any? Ever heard of any?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, good. Approval of meeting minutes from May 10th and May 11th. These were some long ones. So... Is it May 11th is first in our packet? We start with May 11th. Does anyone have anything from May 11th?
May 10th?
We could go either way. May 11th was first in my packet.
Okay. Well, I just had one little technicality in May 10th.
Okay.
Under number 15. The vote, I think it was unanimous, but my name was excluded. So, just for the record, under number 8 of... Let's see, here we go. Three of conclusions.
What page are you on?
I... That's a good question. Well, this...
See, they don't have page numbers on them.
Third page.
Okay. Oh, number 8 down here, if participating in launch, there should be, and then that next paragraph?
Yes. I didn't see my name, and for the record, it was unanimous, so...
Yeah, your name is not there. So she must have... Oh, she's got D. Wright. Because Hawkins recused himself. That's what happened.
Okay.
She's put the wrong last name in. So that should be changed. The D. Wright should be changed to Denise's last name. Yeah, on the 10th. And then, which member's present? We're missing one, too. Jason's not listed up there as members present.
Yes, she is.
Oh, she arrives right at 7:14 on the next line. So we should add Merchant up there.
Did you say you had another one?
No.
Oh, okay. Anyone else from May 10th?
Yeah, I had one. The same paragraph that Denise was talking about, 8, on page 3. It says, "If participating in launching, it has to be at north end with road ends." I think that's ambiguous.
Wait a minute.
North end period.
I did see that.
Right here. I think it should be, if launching, it would have to be at the...
North on launch.
North end or road ends.
No.
No, I think we took road ends out of it entirely.
Yeah.
So we just had, have to be at the north and DNR access or something.
DNR.
That was what we talked about.
Good catch.
See, did I have anything else?
Is there notes on that one? I know I had one from the 11th on page 2. One, two, three, four, five. Five lines down. It states that I read most of them. Oh, I read all of them. And then I had a count. I had a count of four in support. That's all I had.
What was the second thing that you mentioned?
I had four letters in support.
Oh, okay.
On the title page in the header, instead of saying May 11th, it says Wednesday, 11, 2022, so we should...
Good catch. Skip right over the normal things. Okay, good.
You got anything, Jason?
No.
Okay. Final call? Everybody good?
Do you want to make a motion to accept the minutes as corrected? Or as corrected?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second that. Great. Go for vote. Oh, yeah, a vote. Vote.
Aye.
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 Any notes? No. All right. Public comment on agenda items other than public hearings and new business. Not... No. Okay. Anybody else? Any comments? Okay, great. Moving on. Ongoing reports, zoning administrators' report.
There's a zoning administrator report in your packet laying out the permits that have been issued and any enforcement, any land divisions, any items for you. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to the zoning office related to that. Does anybody have any additional questions for us?
Nope. Okay. PC representative to ZVA report.
No report tonight.
Okay.
No meeting.
Man, this is quick. TLT board representative on PC.
I have no report. I missed the last meeting.
Okay. Check, check, check. Correspondents. I know we've got a few things. Do we wait on that?
Yeah, you can do that during the public hearing, because all the correspondence I believe you have is related to the application.
Great. New business. Special use permit. Jeff Felix requests for short-term rental permit application, parcel number 0514-495-00600, located at 6074 North M-88, Central Lake, Michigan, 49622, in the Village Business zoning district. All right. Mr. Felix, you're up. Yes, please.
Oh, let me turn that on.
Can you hear me? No, no, no. Thank you. So, Laura, like you had mentioned, I am applying for a short-term rental permit at 6074 North M-88. And the purpose of this will be used primarily for short-term rental, but also for myself and my family, so...
Can you raise that at all? It's hard for us.
Can you hear me? Okay. So, once again, I'm applying for a short-term rental permit. Be used primarily to rent out, but also for my family to use as well.
At all? All right. Thank you. Okay. Do I have to call the public hearing? I didn't do that.
It's okay.
Okay.
So now you can open it up for public comment.
Okay.
I mean, let me, I'll just give a brief, I mean, my report's really brief in here for the application. And we have only had... I was talking to Jackie about how many short-term rental applications the township's reviewed and approved and gone through the process. And we found two of them. They've both been approved. And the only place that we allow for short-term rentals are in the village district. And so this property is in the village district. They submitted some drawings, and you did get some additional information with their house rules for their property and the signage that he'd like to put up as well, which would require a separate permit. But it's nice to have that information and a floor plan for the property. So, because this is a short-term rental, and short-term rentals are anything that's rented less than 30 days, and any variation of time, less than 30 days, is considered a short-term rental. The only thing that we really have here are these special use standards. When you're going to go through, and you'll recall, because you just read those minutes, we'll go through each of those, and you can make a finding if it's met or not. We typically do have some conditions that we put on the application. They may or may not be feasible for this application. Just because you put them on another short-term rental doesn't mean that they have to go here. Or if you didn't do a condition on someone else, doesn't mean that you can't add it to this application, because each application is unique. You're going to look at them individually, their surroundings and the property when you're doing the review. So I mentioned a couple of them, parking, quiet hours, capacity limits. Potentially, there is some information in the packet, but you can also put it in the conditions. That makes it easier to enforce, should the property ever get sold or anything like that, since it stays with the property. In addition, on your desk tonight, there is a document. It looks like this, it says Torch Lake Township on the top, and it's got highlight. This is from one of the last applications, some of the conditions that were imposed by the Planning Commission on that short-term rental. Just kind of to show you some of the items that the Planning Commission talked about when approving that. And that was in July of 2020 that that application came through. Well, I should say, that's when this letter was drafted, but it was based on an approval that happened. So, and actually, that meeting was September. It does say September 19th meeting. They approved the application there, so... With that, if anybody has any questions for me?
I do. So, what are we going through, these standards? It's already allowed in there, so what are we going?
Because it's allowed as a special use permit, so that's where those standards come in for your review. Just the special use. It's exempt from the site plan review requirements and standards. It's a little kind of unique in that way, and it... Maybe that'd be something, I don't remember what we did in the draft, dealing with short-term rentals. But, yeah, you just have these four special use standards you're going to want to look at in making your decision for it.
Sarah, can you tell us? I admit, I didn't look at the additional stuff until today, so... Can you tell us more about the sign stuff, like...
Well, he gave you the sign information. We were just looking through the ordinance. And the ordinance allows for a business establishment. So if you have a business or something similar, it allows for a freestanding sign of 50 square feet for that. And I would consider this a business establishment. He's here in front of you, you know, as a special use permit, operating it as a business.
Okay. Did you say that the size of the sign could be...
50 feet. 50 square feet. Yep. That's what all the businesses in the village district can have.
I mean, he just, he put his new sign or the old sign, correct?
This one doesn't have a sign. One of the other short-term rentals did just put up a sign, but that's a separate issue.
Okay.
This one, he has examples of it. There's no sign out there right now, right? Yeah.
If there is, that would be mixed up.
Yeah, and the sign would, the sign is a separate permit and really is outside of kind of the purview for your application, but it is nice to have the information.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Could I ask a question of clarification in terms of the landscaping screening? Because this, well, when you were just saying it really is a business, but is there a different circumstances, stance because it's a residential? I mean, I went and walked the property. I'm kind of foggy on what, if we were to ask... I mean, because we were pretty picky about another one that we just approved. So I'm just wondering, how does this compare, contrast with that?
It's all about the intensity and kind of the impacts of what you think it would have on the neighbors. So if you think that there is something related to the short-term rental that would function, that they would need additional screening or requirements. Some of the other applications that we have, you know, they have parking lots with people that come and go at different times of the day, multiple cars. We had headlights that, you know, were pointed at additional property, you know, neighboring properties, that we were trying to protect those neighbors with, from those headlights. You know, the short-term rental, they do come and go, and you can have... A lot of times, we've restricted the cars to two cars in the parking lot. I was thinking, this has four vehicles, is in their rules for parking. And so they could come and go a little bit, kind of like a business, but it functions a little bit more like a single-family dwelling. Or, you know, and maybe somebody, a family, you know, that has two parents and four kids, and they all drive. You know, that can be more disruptive sometimes than someone else. It's hard, that's where it comes into the Planning Commission's review when you're looking at the standards. And if they were going to be parking right along a property line, or say the duck was right up against the neighbor's property, and you had some concerns with some sort of function, then you could throw in some additional landscaping.
I'm looking at this, I'm sorry. I'm looking at this...
Can you talk into the mic, Webber? The mic.
There we go. I was looking at the submission and these pictures of the lot, and I'm a little confused, because I went by there and looked at it, but I guess I might not have been looking at the right property. This is the diagram I'm looking at. Where's the parking?
The parking is right on the, on the front of the road. It's right up here in front. Kind of that, that light, that light area on the south side.
Anyway, right here, there's a driveway for, you know, easily for two vehicles to pull up and park well out of the traffic.
Okay.
Any other questions?
How necessary, Mr. Felix? How necessary is four parking spaces versus two?
If you could come up to the mic. Thanks.
I received the conditions after, but I put four parking spaces only because that's what's currently there and has been for many, many years.
Oh.
So there's nothing being changed. It's absolutely the same.
Okay. I did not know that.
Which, I'd like to ask, could we ask it to be changed? Because it does kind of look like a parking lot. And it's, you're creating more of a home-type thing. I'm happy to hear that you're going to be using it also. With the two parking space requirement in front already in the, in the business... Residential...
Business? The village business.
Village business. Is that something we could require to have two designated spots and the rest make more look like a lawn or a...
Yeah, I think if that's something that you need to be able to meet the standards for approval. You know, we would want to make sure that there's enough parking spaces for the number of cars that are there, and they're not parked in the road. So if you say that there can only be two cars there, and there's two parking spots, then that's what they'll just have to regulate it to. You know, there's a space right now for the four, but it has just been, you know, a single-family dwelling. It hasn't been used as the short-term rental, or not, it has not been permitted as a short-term rental, I guess I should say. I don't know how it's been used.
If I can make one point, we're surrounded by the cafe across the street. Directly behind is the post office, and then M-88 and 31. So there's already cover alongside the neighbor to the, sorry, directions, but east, thank you. East, there's already cover all along that line. So, again, it's been 20, 30 years it's been like that, so...
I was just particularly talking about the front. There's no lawn. It's just parking.
There is lawn. This picture doesn't do any justice.
Yeah. No, I'm very, I'm a neighbor, so I'm very familiar with it. I'm glad to have you join us, but...
Thank you.
I'm just, it's just a question for discussion. Could it look more home-like rather than, it looks like a business, you know? Because it has been a business in the past, so... It's just a comment.
Most recently was a long-term rental?
Are there, is there a limit to the number of people that can rent it at one time?
There is, there's enough for five, five guests. You can see, I think I put it in the rules there, no camping, there's no tents, no trailers, nothing like that, so...
Noise curfew. Was it called out in there what the noise curfew was?
I was just going based on the Torch Lake Cafe. It seems like 10 o'clock, it's pretty, that's it, so we're going to go with that.
Okay.
It seems like everybody's pretty happy in the neighborhood with that.
So you are going to put in your paperwork that noise curfew?
Yes, 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 to clarify, yes.
Okay. I have a question. Who, I have never used VRBO. So who actually vets these people so that you have some idea of who's coming to stay at your house? Do you do that yourselves, or does the company do that as a third party?
That's a great question. There's not really a vetting process. There isn't really. I mean, they're, they're vetting you. And then if there's any situation, then, you know, there's security deposits and all that, so...
Do you get to, is it like Uber, where if you get a bad rider, you can give them a bad review? Can you give a renter a bad review?
Not that I'm aware of, but I don't think that it would be any different than the Torch Lake Inn across the street. They use the same Trave velocity and Airbnb and VRBO. It's the exact same thing.
You're not local, are you?
No.
Okay. Do you have somebody local that would be managing?
I do, yes. It's in the paperwork.
All right, so there is someone local who will be kind of keeping tabs. I mean, not that they have to camp out and look, but they'll notice if there's a bunch of cars or, you know, something...
Yes.
...warrant happening.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you point me to where that is, like...
It's on, it's on the... Yeah, back of the floor, exterior plans. Photos.
Thank you.
The motel that we have, am I correct when I say they can only rent that certain times of the year? They do that on their own? Oh, okay.
It was open in the wintertime years ago.
Yeah, I know. I just, for some reason, I thought...
I don't know the details. I'd have to pull the file to see if there was some sort of a... But if they were open in the wintertime, I would say probably not.
Probably not what?
Probably, there's probably no restriction or condition that they had to be closed in the winter.
Okay, so bearing that, I'm just wondering why, in the SUP for Mr. Jenkins, why was that included? Why were rental terms or terms, times a year specified in there? Why not rent it in the winter for skiers or...
That was at the applicant's. That was part of his application.
Oh, okay.
If there's no other questions from the Planning Commission, we could open it up to the public and then go back to questions?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, we'll start with Dave Taylor.
Felix, I don't see it in here, but are you gonna... Are you gonna let your renters launch fireworks?
No, no fireworks. But thank you for pointing that out, and I'll make sure that it's in the paperwork. Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, you sure?
Yep.
I'm gonna pause 10 seconds. Okay, now, Dave Taylor, you're up.
Hi, Dave Taylor, 5844 North M-88 and also 4935 Northeast Torch Lake Drive. Now, this, my comment here is not necessarily about this particular entrance, about the short-term rentals overall. I do own a house down on the lake, and there's a, there's an ordinance in effect that there are no short-term rentals on the lake. Is that still in effect, right?
Nowhere except the village, or the two village business.
But I'm talking about the actual properties on the lake, which I think are, are one or something, they're a special... There's no short-term rentals allowed there, correct?
If it's not in the business district of the villages, there are no short-term rentals. I'm sorry, I'm speaking for you. I'm sorry.
I mean, usually during public comment, we receive everything, and that's okay.
Okay, well, I guess my comment is, anyway, I live on the lake there, and as far as I know, there are no short-term rentals allowed on the lake. And I appreciate that, because it does afford some protection for us down there from wild parties and everything else. My only comment is that, because I also have a house across the street on M-88, which is not lakefront, I think I should be afforded the same protection, respect, and consideration as far as... I don't think we should have short-term rentals. They're, they don't do anything for the township as a whole. They really don't. And I'm just, I'm against short-term rentals, that's it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will call Susan Stridiron.
Susan Stridiron, 5903 M-88 in Eastport. I'm reading a letter from David Hendershot, who lives at 6046 North M-88 in Eastport. I was planning on coming to tonight's meeting, but I have to travel and would not be able to attend. My grandfather bought a small cabin on the north shores of Torch Lake in 1936, so I feel like a lifelong member of the Eastport community, since I've been living full and part-time in this area all my life. My family and I remodeled, reconstructed the home at 6046 North M-88 in 2010, two doors to the east of the applicant's property. I've been living at the house full-time for the last three years. I can tell you that we have an eclectic neighborhood with different uses, but it is a friendly, it is friendly with a great sense of community. We try to be welcoming to all new neighbors. The concern with a short-term rental are the items that are typical of that use, which include renters that are not respectful of the neighborhood and neighbors, including loud parties, fireworks during periods when they are not allowed, and general disruption. I noted with interest that East Bay Township recently put a hold on issuing permits for short-term rentals due to the disruption of local neighborhoods. I would ask the Planning Commission to give careful consideration to whether the application meets the intention of the master plan. If you feel it meets the master plan, I ask you to consider providing some restrictions as part of the special land use to protect the adjacent residents so that our neighborhood will remain the quiet, respectful community it is. I'll leave it to the discretion of the Planning Commission on what those measures might be. might be, but having a management company that can be contacted when things are not going well would be a good thing, also, I agree with the zoning administrator's recommendations on limiting parking to two vehicles, especially for such a small dwelling, and requiring quiet hours and restricting the capacity of the dwelling, Eastport is a wonderful place to live, play, and work, and I think everyone at this meeting tonight would agree, and the goal would be to keep it that way, David Hendershot.
Thank you. All right, Bill, you're up.
Good evening, Bill Stridiron, 5903 North M-88, Eastport, first of all, the reason I'm here is I am against any short-term rentals in Torch Lake Township, the mood of the people, if you looked at the last survey on the master plan, they do not want short-term rentals, over sixty-eight percent of the setback in the survey that came back, I think it's up to you to honor that request, so with that said, this application is not in keeping with Section 17.01, Standards for Approval, Item Number Two, issued by Beckett Rader in a memorandum dated 6/3/2022, quote, "The special use proposed must be compatible with the zoning and use of adjacent lands," the houses in and around this parcel, unquote, the houses in and around this parcel are all occupied by full-time residents or used for long-term rentals, this is not compatible, just a sidebar, just for a second, the house right next door to this proposed short-term rental is a long-term rental, it's owned by Torch Lake Cafe, so they use it to house the workers, that's what we need, we need long-term rentals, so that our workers have a place to stay while they work in the township, we do not need short-term rentals, approval of this application would open up Pandora's Box on M-88 for short-term rentals, all of you, I'm sure, are driven by this, you see the houses stacked, there are five houses in a row, and ones are long-term rental, most of them are occupied by residents, and then you go to the long-term care facility, and then you go to more private housing on the north side of M-88, if you are to approve this, all of those properties are now subject to people from VRBO to buy them, and just imagine what happens, it's out of control, we have a problem in our township, unfortunately, of enforcing all these zoning requirements, I don't see, I see it getting a little better things about, okay, but not dramatically better, so, you mentioned East Bay before, yesterday, if you haven't seen the news, East Bay has very, very concise, strict regulations for short-term rentals, and they have to be licensed, East Bay now has one hundred and twenty-three licensed short-term rentals, there's thirty-eight in the wings applying right now, thirty-eight more, so what do they do? They put a moratorium on short-term rentals, so I would say if you decide not to turn this application down, I think the least you could do for our community is put a moratorium on this, so we get in our zoning regulations, Sarah, spell out what a short-term rental is required to do, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, nobody else, right? Review, discussion, possible decision.
You should just mention that we received, I'll mention it, we received a couple of public comment letters, one from Cindy Hoyzington, I'm probably gonna butcher the names, I'm sorry, and then Jackie included a letter that she had emailed all of you to that Bill DeVorek had asked a question and she responded, so there's just a written copy of that on your desk, and then from Lynn and Brian Agar, I believe that's all of them that we did receive, and they're all, a copy of them are on your desk as well. Yes, yeah, yep, I said that.
Yeah, I was on the Traverse City City Commission for eight years, and we dealt with the short-term rental issue in Traverse City, excuse me, I left before what's happened to Traverse City recently, which is that they're building a lot of residential properties, condos, duplexes, you know, whatever, and a lot of out-of-town people are buying them and using them as short-term rentals, which I can't agree with because I don't think there is the supervision and the oversight, I like the idea that Jeff is going to be using this as his place to stay occasionally too, because at least that way, you know that he's coming in and looking at it every once in a while, taking note of the damage and the problems and, you know, whatever is going on there, but I'm not sure that short-term rentals is a, is a good idea, now, I know that the legislature is talking about mandating that we don't have anything to do with short-term rentals, that the legislature is gonna take care of that, and we're just SOL, we have to put up with whatever we get, so I'm not sure that this question is gonna be so much up to us very long, but I would like to see us take a, an approach where, kind of what Bill suggested, where we figure out if we're gonna have a short-term rental, what is it gonna look like, where is it gonna be, and have that laid out in our ordinance, and if somebody's got that and can tick all those boxes, then, you know, we should approve it, but if they don't, or they can't take all those boxes for one reason or another, then they'll know that it's not worth applying, because they're probably not gonna get permitted, that would be my thought on it, anyway.
Anyone else? I feel like Jason wants to say something, you're holding it, you're ready? All right.
I, I have something, I'm conflicted because I feel that particular property is a little bit different because I'm grouping it more in with the motel, because it's at that end, it does encircle in every way but one commercial property, I am very concerned about the management, and I also agree that we need long-term rental for our laborers in, especially at this township, I have a house right next to me that a person, it allows migrants to work in, they're wonderful neighbors, and I, I think we really have a lack of that, I don't know how we, how we make that happen, that, you know, we say, okay, we're gonna restrict open housing for long-term, particularly affordable housing, but I think that would be a wonderful approach for us to have, I just don't exactly know how, how you put that into operation, I do like the fact that you're, you know, you wanna participate in using the property yourself, but the management is, is very much of a concern. I don't know, can he speak?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you have a question for him or you need more.
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead and grab it. You can hang on to it till somebody else needs it.
Just to clarify, because there seems to be some concern about onsite management or what's gonna happen if I'm not there, there is a, a, someone that tends in-between stays, so, it's not like somebody comes in, it's no different than the hotel, so somebody comes in, they take care of the cleaning, the linens, the, and they're they're on my payroll, so it's essentially, I don't, I didn't read the ordinance through and through, but is another hotel allowed there? I'm just trying to find out what the difference would be.
I don't have a map in front of me, is that entire section or that's all village, oops, sorry. That's all kind of right village, yeah, village business in there for that, so, I mean, I guess I would just say, the short-term rental, I appreciate Barbara and Denise your comments about short-term rentals, and I think it's something that the planning commission can have that discussion and decide what you'd like to do with them, you know, for his application, we need to deal with what we have in the ordinance, which just says they're allowed in this district, we don't have any requirements, you know, specific standards for them, a licensing ordinance, it is unique in that there, we do not have a licensing ordinance, typically, a lot of communities do have that licensing component that you deal with annually for these short-term rentals, or they don't allow them at all, so we do need to deal with what we have in our ordinance, and I'm making, making notes so that we can come back to it and deal with it either during the draft, or we may need to deal with it all the way back to the master plan and then come back in the zoning ordinance and deal with it, so.
Laura, can I ask you a question that I want to be at Denise's?
Yeah, go.
Okay, so.
You mentioned about licensing, sorry, about licensing, the short-term rentals down there, who was the licensing agency?
The township, gives you licensing.
The township, and is it, is it anything more than a rubber stamp, or is there any enforcement or requirements?
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm not aware of what the details are, but I know that just going through the process of getting a license for a short-term rental will deter some people from doing it, what I didn't touch on, but you people are already aware of this, and I don't think it applies to this situation, but there are major corporations in the United States.
Buying up.
That's what they're doing, buying properties, and that's all they do, is short-term rental. Now, if I could just, shame on you two, some of the documents you're referring to are not available to us in the back of the room, we don't, we didn't see anything about no trailers, we didn't see anything about the number of parking spots, other than two in the application, so it really puts us at a disadvantage sitting in the office, not knowing what this gentleman wants to do, the other thing I didn't see, and pardon me for taking, I apologize, I didn't see the dates that this gentleman wants to operate his short-term rental, are they in there?
It's on the back.
Well, I don't have it, Jason.
It's, it is on the website, Bill.
I looked on the website this morning, I did not see, it could be, I just didn't see it, my point is that if you look at the two short-term rentals.
January to December.
In the Village of Torch Lake Township, they have specific dates that they can operate, and it's generally the summer months, not in the winter, so I don't know what this gentleman wants to do, but if he hasn't put the dates in, you might wanna consider that pretty strongly.
Yeah, the dates are there, it's, it's the entire year.
It's the entire year, though.
Yeah.
It would be a first for this community if that happened.
So I, I think that everyone is in agreement that it's something that we want to discuss more at the time we do the master plan, and we, we're doing the draft of the zoning ordinance, so, you've got it noted, thank you. We'll come back to it, all right, so, unless anyone objects to it, let's go over the standards for approval, if you turn to that second page in our packet, Section 1701E, we'll go over the first one, "Special use proposed must be consistent with and promote the purpose and intent of the ordinance and zone district in which the use is proposed," which is village business, anyone need any conversation on that one?
Yeah, I'm finding it too, I know it's here, I've seen it.
Gets in with the agenda, the agenda's on the front of the packet.
No. Yeah, I don't, I don't have Beckett and Rader.
Okay, you can share mine.
Okay, I'll look at his, I don't know what, what happened to it, I know I had it, because I remember reading them. Nope, I don't have it right now, though, okay, I'll look at yours.
All right, number one, "Special use proposed, consistent with and promote purpose and intent of the ordinance and zone district, village business in which the use is proposed," everyone wanna vote, or do we wanna discuss, anyone need any discussion on that one?
I believe that it does.
You got an extra one?
It is consistent.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'm sorry, Bill, I was distracted, or Bob, I was distracted, can you repeat what you said?
I believe that it does, that the first condition is supported and met, that it's consistent, and the purpose and ten of the, with the purpose and intent of the ordinance, and the zoning district in which it's proposed.
I agree.
I believe that it meets that.
What do you think, Jason? Yeah, you sure good?
It meets it, yes.
Okay, all right, I'll show the vote, everyone? Yes? Just straw poll. Yes?
Yes.
No, just straw poll is fine, just how you're doing it, so, it sounds like everybody I've heard vibes, five guesses, okay? Number two, "Special use proposed must be compatible with the zoning and use of adjacent lands," and Sarah said the lands on either side would be village business as well?
Yes, in my understanding, it, it meets that requirement.
I agree.
Yes.
Yes, I agree, Barbara?
Yes.
Okay, cool, let's go fast, number three, "Special use proposed must not adversely impact the environment."
It may, or it may not, but I think just in and of itself, it won't adversely affect the environment, you might get some runners that are going to be adversely affecting the environment, but, you know, how you know.
They follow the rules.
They shouldn't, yeah, it shouldn't be a problem.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
Okay. Number four, "Special use proposed must not unduly burden or exceed the ability of public services or facilities to handle the anticipated needs of the community." I don't see any problem there.
I believe it meets that requirement.
I agree, my only hesitation is, again, the, the management, when we talk about the needs of the community, handle the, needs of the community, I mean, you're not gonna be around, do you have somebody that can be called on, that will go to the facility to, that will? Yeah.
Yeah, your contact person's in Boynton City. After we go through these, we'll talk about the conditions.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay, so, are you good with number four?
Yes.
Okay, cool, great, done, 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 now conditions, anybody have any to propose?
Jeff, I didn't notice, do you have, do you have a restriction on the number of occupants that can be there at any one time in your rules? Whatever.
Five.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, it doesn't, he doesn't have five in here, so I would just suggest that that be a condition of approval, I agree. You didn't see it somewhere in there?
Well.
Oh, he just said it.
Maybe I heard it, you know.
Yeah. I don't think it hurts anything, though, to put it in the condition as an occupancy limit. Yeah, I agree, I would add it. Jason, you good with that?
I agree.
Okay, cool, add five people, limit. And you guys talked a lot about the parking, any comments on parking, are we gonna go with four vehicles, two vehicles, three, ten, twenty?
I would like to limit it to two, because it's a small house, there's small bedrooms, it's a small lot.
Yeah.
I just think that two would be, it should be adequate. I just think that two would be, it should be adequate.
What happens if it's, if it's just personal use? Are we still eliminating it to two?
That wouldn't qualify, right? Because it's his property, it wouldn't be a short-term rental.
How do we know when it's renters and when it's just him?
That's the issue when you distinguish, you know, when you...
Because I liked limiting the number of vehicles, but then I would think, what happens if he wants his family over for Christmas and they got parked across the street? I mean, I don't know.
Well, I guess I could, I was going to mention that. So the two, is that two at all times, or is that two overnight? But if you have family come, somebody else could park in the driveway as long as everybody's on site. I know that makes it more complicated, but I'm sure there will be situations like that when there's more than just people that are occupying, the property will be there. But I, I mean, I do agree, it is a small house with only two bedrooms.
Well, we want to say something like a max of four, two overnight, or?
If I could just ask a question, is the concern, what is the concern with the cars? Is it, because I can understand overnight, but during the day? I guess, I guess like Sarah said, clarification, is it parked overnight, or is it during the day? That would be, before it got written in as a clarification, I'd want to know.
There again, it's, you know, who's overseeing? Two people or four people could be saying they're staying there, and if it, you know, gets the rep of being this little party house and...
Well, I think that's why, if, just a suggestion, no more than two parked overnight. That way, if somebody does come over from Barnes Park, wants to come over and visit during the day, they're fine, but you got to get your car out of here.
Two overnight?
Yeah.
And you're okay with that?
I'm fine with it. I want, I want to make everybody happy. Probably not going to make everybody 100% happy, but I'm trying.
I'm thinking in terms of protecting you also.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that doesn't happen, and then you got...
We don't want a party house. We do not want a party house, absolutely not.
I got a question for you. What happens if there's eight cars there? Is that when we send zoning enforcement officer over there?
That's when Bob goes out and takes picture and we send a letter and we say that you can't do that. If it happens multiple times, then we can go through and revoke the special use permit if it becomes an issue long-term.
Okay.
So just limiting the, to two cars overnight?
I would let, yeah.
And is that only when used as a rental? Do we need to call it out?
I don't think it's worth stipulating, because there's no way to know and enforce it. So if Mr. Felix is good with that, knowing that it pertains to him also, I'm good with it.
Just a quick question, if we don't have the data?
Oh.
What about trailers and things like that? If you didn't limit that in other short-term rentals?
There, well, there's no place to really park it. Well, I guess if you're good, you could back it up in there.
There is.
Can you use the microphone, please?
Bill hung it up again.
That, that was in my mind as well. There is actually room to pull a car up alongside of the house, as it has been before, to make sure that the boat has enough clearance for the, for the, no, M-88. I'm still learning.
And that would count as one of the two overnights, right?
That's what I would think.
It would, but do you want, do you want trailer parking available on the property?
I, they're, they're coming up here for boating. That's, that's why they're, they're going to use it. I think it's more just to get on the lake and to enjoy the parks, not so much to stay there, to be honest.
So what'd you decide on the trailers?
Trailer vehicle, or is it one, one trailer is allowed?
We didn't, we didn't say, do we want to limit number of trailers, or just?
Does it count as a vehicle, like, it has to be parked in parking space and it meets the two limit?
I don't think you should count it as a vehicle, because, I mean, it's not, it's, it's an adjunct to a vehicle. It's an addition to a vehicle. You hook to a trailer, that's considered part of your vehicle, I mean, under state law, so.
So would you have to just require them to be parked in a parking spot? Or could it be parked in the grass, or?
I'd rather see it shoved off to the side, so you can't see it.
So trailer parking to side?
Can't you get it off the side?
To the, to the west side?
It's to the side of the house.
On the west side?
So there's no, no more than one boat trailer would be able to fit on that property.
So one trailer parking, that's on the, on the 31 side, or is it on the house side, east or west?
It's alongside of the house.
Between the two houses?
Yes. But again, there's...
It's on the east side.
And when we're speaking of trailers, we're talking about boat trailers?
I'm assuming. I, I'm putting in my paperwork, if I haven't already, I will, that there's no campers, tents, none of that. No camping.
And will, this, this, as written, we would put that in there? This would be part of it, okay. Do we want, you said you would add the, the no fireworks thing? I don't know if we need to or not, because you're not supposed to without a permit, right?
The fireworks are regulated by the township ordinance, as far as there are certain days you can set them off. The township can't say, you know, you can't set them off on those days. The property owner can write into their rules that they don't want them to use that for that.
So the final, the final version of this, which includes that the minimum of these would be submitted?
Yeah, that can work, updated rules.
Yeah.
So his rules are going to be a part of the conditions?
They're part of the application, so they'd be in there.
And what is then going to be specifically, what could we agree upon?
So it would be his no smoking, no pets, children are fine.
The list that he gave us, yeah.
Oh, these things.
Yep.
And then I think the curfew time, though, that 10 o'clock launch, definitely be in there.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, what did you just say, Laura?
The curfew time?
Oh, yeah.
We have that noted.
Yes, noise curfew.
Excuse me, can I just make a comment? It like said this isn't particular to him, but you talked about putting, I don't think you said you're going to put a condition in there for like one boat trailer or no camping trailers?
There, there's no camping.
Is that going to be in the, is that in it? Or, because remember, this goes beyond him.
Yeah, right, yes, that would be part of, part of the conditions.
He agrees to it. It is going to be a condition.
Yeah, yeah, it's already in there.
So parking is going to be limited to two vehicles and one trailer?
One trailer that's supposed to be parked to the east side of the house.
Parked on the east side of the house.
So that's going to be a condition in the approval, not, not his submission?
His, his submission will be part of the conditions in the approval.
Not carry on with anybody else?
Yes. Oh, I had a question. You know, we have all these, we've done in the past where you've got to have a local contact person. Do we, can we, do we want to, should there be anything in there, like a response time? Or, you know, like, yeah, there's a contact person, but I can't ever get a hold of them. We did say you have to keep it updated, but, I mean, do they have 10 days to get back to you about somebody next door being loud, or? Can you do that? Would we want to?
I don't think so. I think, I think failure of the management person to get back to you is a failure to abide by the conditions. So I would say we don't need that.
Yeah, because if we start sending out letters, well, probably, the enforcement process, well, depending on what it is, would probably be a phone call, hey, we received your complaints, follow up with a letter, another letter, and then it's like, you're done. Yeah. Because there's not, I mean, we don't have 24/7 enforcement township side of it. You know, a neighbor, I mean, there's the information's in those packets, a neighbor could call them, you know, and say, your renter is being, you know, at midnight or something like that.
Your renter lit it on fire.
Right. You have no house anymore, you know, and good luck. So from township enforcement procedures, it would be something where if there's an issue there and somebody sees something or a neighbor, they would need to call the township. If it's something, if it's noise related, or something that happens after hours, or fireworks are regulated by the police department, but, you know, we need documentation, too. So take a picture, take a video, something that you can provide the township. Because we're willing to make the first phone call and say we've had this problem, but when we end up going to court, whoever complains is going to need to testify and provide the documentation, because we didn't witness it. So it is a little bit, kind of, it's kind of clunky, but we don't have any other avenue, and we don't have the, a licensing ordinance to really help deal with it.
Do we, do we provide that final, the final deals with the contact information to the neighbors or anything? Or make it available to them easily, or do they have to like come up here and?
They would, they would have to call or, I mean, they could call and ask, or maybe they'd be required to get a FOIA for it, I don't know that process. I guess you could ask the neighbors, or the owner, to supply that to their neighbors. I don't know, we haven't done that in the past, have we?
It has to be in there, it would be nice. Then you get to meet all your neighbors, bring them cookies or something.
I mean, in, in that, in that spot, you know, the post office is one neighbor and, you know, the restaurant, the hotel, so there, it's very, it is limited to the people that are affected.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Yes, referring back to the Jenkins S U P, number six. Should that be listed specifically in there, that conditions are not met, that we will preserve the right to?
You don't need to, that's in the ordinance and our power.
And can we talk about the months of operation? Does that need to be limited, or does it really matter if it's open to snowmobilers as well as boaters?
Yeah, I mean, his application has year-round in there. If it's something that you feel needs to be limited in order to protect the neighbors or comply with the zoning ordinance, then you could do that. But because the ordinance doesn't have any restrictions, it says it can only operate during certain times, you'd really have to tie it back to some negative impact having it year-round.
I don't personally see the need to restrict it. Anybody else?
No.
I'm told there's not many good riding trails nearby.
So I have to add to the rules and as conditions would be a limit of five people, 10:00 p.m. curfew or quiet time. He's going to add no fireworks into his rules, two overnight cars allowed, one trailer parking that's on the east side of the house, and then we would like an updated copy of the rules provided to the township. That include those that I just listed. Is there anything else?
I do have seat, quiet hours.
So we just, we just did the curfew, noise curfew at 10:00 p.m. I guess we don't have a morning time.
Crank her up at 6:00 a.m.
Yep, I mean, if, if the morning time, you may want to put something on the morning side, I don't know.
I don't know, too many people that are noisy that get up early.
Especially if you listen to KFAL night.
Anybody, anybody? Cool, now somebody gets to say what Sarah said in the form of a motion, right?
Yeah, so you're, you know, you're going to make a motion to approve this application with the number for it, for a short-term rental at 6074 North M-88, as it meets the standards and requirements of the ordinance with the conditions that we listed and discussed.
Why are you looking at me? I can anyway, right?
You can.
Oh, I wasn't listening that close, because I thought I could.
I'd like to make a motion. There we go, Bob. To approve special use permit number 2022-04 with the following conditions. That the occupants be limited to five. Parking limited to two vehicles plus one trailer to be parked on the east side of the house between the houses. That noise curfew start at 10:00 p.m. I don't think there's any more, is there?
That parking is overnight parking.
Thank you. Two vehicles overnight parking.
And then the no fireworks be added to the rules.
All right, stand by on that. I don't know that we have, that's already within the township ordinance. It's not a condition we can put.
He agreed to it. He agreed, he said that he's not going to allow fireworks.
Okay. So, and that Mr. Felix will include in his rental contracts, no fireworks usage.
And that's because it meets all of the standards in the ordinance?
Yes. Was there one more about the recent meeting?
Did we have, did we have restricted to occupancy, overnight guests and stuff was limited to five? Okay. I can remember if we talked about that again or not.
Wait for a second.
Yes.
I'll second Bob's motion.
Can we discuss?
Yeah, discuss. I was just going to ask, do we need that added in as far as the, the?
Oh, that the rules, the updated rules be submitted to the township?
Yeah, do we need to add that to?
Yeah, that should be in there.
Yeah, that should.
I will, I will amend my recommendation to accept the application for special use permit 2022-04 with the pre-mentioned conditions, adding that the list of rules be supplied.
Updated rules, yeah.
Updated rules be supplied to the township.
Do you support that, Jason?
I'll second that.
None? All right, let's vote. Barbara?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
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 Fantastic. Great work.
And I would just like to reiterate, Laura, as your chair, that, that I think we need to review this when we do the ordinance or the master plan and talk about what do we really want? Because I think, we've talked about how more and more people are moving here. I think more and more people are buying up property around here, too, and, you know, doing a lot of short-term rental stuff. And so we need to be careful about how we manage that, or we're going to end up like East Bay Township.
I suspect we'll have a lot of public input on that. Everybody here is going to bring their friend and their neighbor and participate in the survey on the new master plan and all kinds of good stuff.
Yeah, yeah, it's a hot topic.
Yeah.
So may I make a comment? I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we, after the approval of this, reinstate a moratorium on short-term rentals, short-term rental applications, until we can go back and work it through with the master plan to get everything consistent. I guess that's good enough.
Okay. How long is the moratorium? How long can you go?
A moratorium, so there's a couple of things. A moratorium can only go for about six months. It has to be something that's approved by the board, the board issues the moratorium, or the township board, I should clarify. But it's something that we could, we couldn't go, we can go through and amend the ordinance and take short-term rentals out as a use of the zoning ordinance. That's something we could do and go through that process if the planning commission's interested. So we can either make a recommendation that the board impose a moratorium, which we won't get through the master plan and the zoning ordinance, but it would give us time to make an amendment to remove short-term rentals from the ordinance. So we could make that recommendation, or we could just go through the process without the moratorium to amend and take it out.
But that process is going to take a lot longer than six months, isn't it?
The...
Most likely.
The master plan and that part will, but if you can, if you want to just remove that use from the ordinance, we could get that done in six months, because next month you could talk about it, schedule the public hearing for the following month, ship it up to the county and the township board. So we could definitely do that, if there's interest. I can add it to the agenda for next month as a discussion item? We do have a motion, though, we should deal with this motion, I'm sorry.
So should I withdraw that in amendment to, that we send a recommendation to the board?
We can do that.
Redo the ordinance, amend the ordinance? Redo the ordinance, amend the ordinance in the meantime while we work it out?
Yep.
Okay. And I so make that motion.
Can you say it in your microphone?
I would like to make a motion that we send a recommendation to the board to remove a short term rental from an approved special use permit for village business until such time that we can reconcile with the, redo the master plan and, and make it consistent.
Anyone care to second that?
I'll second it.
All right. Vote.
Yes.
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 No.
No?
No.
Okay. Say that into your microphone, please.
No.
Thank you.
So that's a four to one.
Yes. Great. Okay, can we move on here, unfinished business?
Yeah, we have the annual report. This has been in your packet a couple of times. We haven't only gotten to talk about it. So Bill was kind enough to kind of put this together for the planning commission. It's right after the application, so it's right after the picture, the site plan from that application. And it talks about what, what happened last year, what the planning commission worked on, you know, there's three new members and then worked on the zoning ordinance amendment at the end of the year and looking forward. The planning commission wants to work on the township master plan and talks a little bit about that. So.
Yeah, it was pretty short.
Yeah. Does anybody have any comments, questions, changes? The ultimate action that we would look to for the annual report is basically you would approve and forward to the township board. So this is your, this is the planning commission's report to the township board. You're required by law to provide them one every year.
I read it when I first got it and I don't remember, but I remember thinking it was fine.
And that's what Bill volunteered to put, to put it together. I had had one drafted in the packet and he said, oh, I'll, I'll take care of it. So I go.
Works for me.
So.
Anybody have any comments, concerns? No? No? Need a motion then?
Need a motion to approve and send to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve it and send it to the board.
I'll second.
Fantastic. And we all will or not?